Hello everyone and thanks for tuning into Canadians with Disabilities and their allies. My name is Brent Frain, I'm the host. Today is Friday, August the 2nd, 2024. And please click on your favorite app where you'd like to listen to the podcast, where you find it best suited for you. Please like, subscribe and share the contents that you are seeing or hearing today. And it really helps us to kind of, you know, keep on track of all the shows going forward. All the content that you like, you know, definitely jump in and stay up to date on all the advocacy work that we do. And the guests that we have on that about lived experience. And with that being said, I mean, today I have Dan Treys from Toronto, Ontario, joining me. Dan has a very big announcement to make today to all of our listeners and their viewers that are tuning in today on our live feed on YouTube. And so with that being said, I'm gonna pass it over to Dan Treys. Dan, thank you very much for joining me today on this special announcement. What is the big announcement that you have to share with us today?
What's up with you guys? Always a great conversation, man. Kinda dopey looking outside here in Toronto, kinda rainy and stuff and muggy. But yeah, so yesterday it's official, right? Like I signed up to be the next city councillor in Ward 15. That happens on November 4th, which lucky for us just so happens to be the day before the American election, yay! Everybody loves more elections. But yeah, just running to be the city councillor up there with the lived experience and my practical work experience down at City Hall, I think it'll be a big asset. Already getting positive feedback, I mean, the last 24 hours, man. You guys know me, I'm a what the F and a what the F, but I've been humbled, man. You know, messages coming from various people around the city and quite frankly, around the country. So yeah, just happy to be a part of it. Ten candidates so far, I believe, last time I checked this morning. And everybody's got something to offer, right? I just think with the total combined experience that I have, it's gonna be a great campaign and the next three months are gonna be pretty heavy duty, man.
Congratulations, Dan. You know, I know this is something that you've really wanted to do for quite some time. And made it official. And so again, I wanna, you know, thank you on this. Congratulations on your, on running for city council. Yeah, I mean, you're a very strong advocate within your community and across your province and across the country. You know, because I echo a lot of your advocacy work that you do. I mean, seeing, you know, what goes on ground level throughout different provinces and hearing lived experience stories and the stories that you share with us on a regular basis of what's going on in your community and making it aware of all the inequalities that need to be fixed. You know, is it housing or is it street level, the transit, infrastructure, whatever it may be. You're awesome, thank you for that.
Well, no, thank you for those compliments and it's great to hear, right? It's like I said, it's humbling and it's not for the notoriety end of it, right? But it's just the fact that like even if you help one person, it's great, right? You know, there's a few candidates in this race so far that I know of. You know, one worked as an advisor for the TTC, which is our Toronto Transit Commission. One was a former candidate that I helped in 2022, Evan Sambisivam. And you know, another school trustee. And so there's candidates that have various things to offer, but the one thing I have to offer above and beyond my lived experience is the fact that my job at City Hall on the second floor in those offices was actually as a constituency assistant. So I had to deal with various issues, whether it be Toronto Police Service, the TTC, homelessness and housing, PWD issues. As well, I sat on the board of directors for the intercity family health team. So I have a full understanding of the budgets, who to go to, who to talk to about what. So the ability to hit the ground running on day one, the ability to be able to set up an office on day one, that's gonna be a huge asset. But it's all about the people. I mean, we have this thing called the Eglin Town Cross Town there. It's this project of transit that's been happening for the last 40 years. And there's no end in sight. So we gotta get some kind of agreement to that. There's millions of dollars being lost monthly probably by the businesses that are affected by this issue. So that along with safety, car thefts and things like that. Start slow, baby steps. Follow the lead of what was left to us by the former councillor Jay Robinson, who passed away and may have cancer. So respect what's been going on in the community as well as bringing new ideas forward to go forward with the community as a whole.
Yeah, it's definitely lots to dig into for sure. And you have a lot of experience in those areas. And I know you have what it takes to be a really awesome candidate. And then once you, well, I mean, you wouldn't be a candidate once you got in because you would actually be a very great, successful city councillor to represent your community.
Well, that's the other aspect of it too, right? You can have like, you know, being an advocate in the community is the way you start, you get involved, right? And if you have the ability to run, you get involved in campaigns. And I've been lucky enough to be involved with about, I don't know, about two dozen campaigns over the last few years. The last campaign I was involved in, the last three campaigns actually were municipally for our Toronto City Council back in 2022. Evan Sambisivam, who I mentioned earlier, happened to finish second place in that, which was a great showing against an incumbent of like 40 years. The other two gentlemen that I helped are now city councillors, sitting at Toronto City Council. So if that's not experience to show, the ability to be able to campaign and get the message across at the door, then I don't know what will be, right? So again, it's starting tomorrow, I'm looking forward to the door knocking and that's the most important part about elections, getting the word out there. And not only that, but allowing the people to vent their frustrations and concerns to you with the ability to speak back.
Yeah, what I was gonna say is, I mean, you mentioned it already, Dan. You feel you already have the experience to hit the ground running. But I was gonna make the point too that, I mean, there's lots of very seasoned politicians out there, whether it's on, at the city level or the provincial level or whatever. And you know, you might not fit the bill of a seasoned politician per se. But you know, as we see on the podcast all the time, like lived experience goes a long way, right? And I think it's important to have more people with lived experience at the table and have people that are passionate advocates. I think you're seeing that more and more, people that are really passionate advocates coming to the table and saying, I wanna put my name forward because I think I can make a difference. And you're one of those people, Dan.
And I appreciate that. And to those that have that concern, that's a very valid concern, right? You're right, I'm not your seasoned politician, right? I'm not the person you would standardly see on a ticket, so to speak. But my rebuttal to that would be to people, how's that been working out for you? You know, it hasn't been going too well, right? So what you were just getting into there is the lived experience is what counts, right? Obviously, you have to understand budgets, you have to understand procedures. You have to understand that when you're sitting in council chambers, you don't just blurt something out, you say through you, Madam Speaker, when you have a conflict, you declare, you know, you have to know those procedures. But if you've never been homeless, you will never understand it. If you've never been a PWD, you will never understand it. If you're not a female, you don't understand female issues and so on and so forth, right? So in going through this campaign, it not only gives you the opportunity to put your name out there, but again, it allows you to hear the concerns of the community and to show them that you're actually gonna be there for them and not just there for all the bullshit. And that's my only swear word of the day.
Yeah, I mean, going to the, you know, the doors and like doing door knocking and hearing what people have to say and what, you know, what they wanna see changed in their community or what is bothering them that, you know, that maybe they haven't been representative in the past and listening to your lived experience and coordinating that back and forth. And yeah, like kinda echoing their thoughts. And I think it's so important that, you know, anyone who is considering in, you know, pursuing their advocacy to a next level, you know, like you, Dan. Yeah, definitely put your name forward, you know, when the opportunity arises. I think door knocking is number one, the number one key part of the campaign. Because you get to hear about lived experience. I mean, you hear about the mother and the father with their little children of saying, well, you know, they can't afford daycare or they can't afford the transit. Well, why? Maybe it's just too expensive or maybe the transit's not running as much in their area. Or it doesn't take them where they wanna go to. Or they, maybe they hear that their neighbors are homeless, why are they homeless? Like, what can we do as a community to fix these problems? Yeah, it's sort of so many, so many levels of that. And having a great representative out there to represent those people in the community is so important.
Well, the one thing I will say, like for example, us there in Don Valley West, one of the biggest issues we have is that Eglin Town Cross Town. As I said, it not only affects the general business of the area, but think about the little things. It also affects the timing of that single mother who's trying to get home to her child to spend more time with them and what have you. So the one thing we gotta tackle, I think, down at City Hall is, and you've heard it before from other people, but it's the truth, it's the red tape of getting through stuff. So there's a reason why the delays are happening here on the Eglin Town Cross Town. And it's because of the fact that some of the issues are being controlled by provincially run companies, not city. So we have to come to some kind of togetherness to talk about these things and get through this. Because the people in Don Valley West, they're getting shit on right now hard. The premier's trying to take away the Ontario Science Centre, which has been a part of our area for decades now and relocate it down to the Ontario Place site where they have this big spa going in. We have to stop treating these issues. I said it to somebody yesterday and they disagreed with me, but it's okay. But we have to stop treating these issues as a business and start focusing on people's needs and wants. We should not be talking about other projects going into other areas like, okay, let me reword that. We should be talking about and getting projects into other areas, but we shouldn't be talking about it when we haven't even completed this project that's been going on for 40 years, right? It doesn't make any sense whatsoever. So we have to have accountability, transparency and just be brutally honest with the people. It's gonna suck sometimes. Sometimes there's gonna be things that I say or others say that it's just gonna kick somebody right in the groin, right? But those are the things you have to go through in order to get the job done for the community as a whole. I'm not here for any one party or person, I'm here for Don Valley West Ward 15.
It's all that red tape that's involved, it's all the bureaucracy and they just need to cut the fat off the top and actually get right down to the basics of the core of the issues and focus on those core of the issues and tackle them. And rather than, yeah, all these big projects, well, yeah, like this, yes, important, but let's deal with that after, let's just deal with the actual issues today, how it affects people's lives now. Yeah, you're right on that, Dan, I mean, totally. I mean, some people, yeah, they probably disagree with what I'm saying too. Like, hey, you don't even live out there. Well, no, I don't, but I hear about lived experience stories, what people go through too. And you would know better than I know, Dan, because that's your area that, where you live. And you see on ground level how it affects people's lives on the decision-making that is done. And yeah, you're definitely 100% correct on that, 150% correct is that the cities need to, the city needs to communicate with the province. And they need to be on the same playing field so that we got all ducks in a row of saying, okay, yeah, let's get all this done.
I don't think it matters, I don't think it, oh, we just lost Dan. I think he's gonna, I think he's gonna log in again. He said he was gonna have maybe problems with his cellphone, so we'll wait for him to log in again. But what I was, maybe I can just say it now is that, you know, people that are... Oh, actually, I'll just wait for Dan to sign in so he can hear me. Just one second, Dan, I'll pin you up again. There we go. What I was gonna say just before you got booted off is, you know, I think no matter where you live, whichever city you live across Canada in, I think everybody knows the frustration of jurisdictional issues. And like I can, I can say from myself, you know, when I see like jurisdictional issues of, you know, it's not my issue, it's not my issue. And there's just like kicking the ball back and forth, you know, and I just find that really annoying, you know? And I think, I think everybody, you know, like I said, across Canada can see that, so, yeah.
Well, I mean, I always rant about the transit, just for instance, when I say you can't get from Victoria to Duncan back and forth. I mean, it's, you know, one municipal area passing the buck back and forth. Well, rather than like just deal with it, and if they can't get the province on board and figure out where the problem is, where the red tape's involved, cut the tape, right? Cut the red tape and work together and get it done because it keeps people flowing throughout the day, throughout their communities. It benefits every community, it benefits the citizen, basically, and a citizen of Canada. I mean, we don't have, there should never be barriers, should we call it, between each province? Like a citizen is a citizen and they should be able to go where they want throughout the country and not have all these red tape involved in saying, or you can have transit but you can't, or you can have, you know, whatever housing and you can't, or you can't leave the province because you need permission. Like, I mean, all these things and so it's a ripple effect throughout our society. And having representatives at the table who can make positive change and advocate when they're, you know, elected also too. It really brings our voices forward and having Dan, you know, I really, you know, if I was there, I'd be voting for you right now.
I appreciate that, and that's why I'm voting for you. Yeah, and that, well, that's why I'm focused on that Eglin Town Cross Town too, right? Because so in Toronto, we have 25 wards, right? And the Eglin Town Cross Town actually starts all the way in the west in the Tobico. So it's affecting, I believe it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Probably a little less than 10 actual wards because Eglin Town Avenue is an actual main artery that flows through the city, right? So again, that's why it affects so many different areas and I'm choosing to focus on it here in Ward 15. But also too, one big thing that's a problem up here, we have an area called the Bridle Path, for example. And that is the quote unquote nice area, Drake's House is up there and such, right? And it's also an area that's been affected a lot by car thefts, whether it be carjackings or home invasion style of car thefts, right? I worked plentiful with the Toronto Police Service over the last four or five years. For the first year or so of my career at City Council, oh, right there is a cop car coming by, perfect timing. But yeah, for the first year or so of my career, I served on something called the Safety Network of Toronto and that's where a group of people made up of various levels of government, representatives, their offices, city officials, police officials and the mayor's office to tackle these types of issues, along with the tow truck wars, along with various gun violence for youth in the city. So again, I hate to keep repeating myself, but it needs to be said, that lived experience and practical work experience going forward, I think is gonna, it's gonna be what resonates with the citizens. Not necessarily saying I'm gonna win 100% because you never know, things happen. But glad to be a part of it and I ensure you that at the end of it, no matter who is the next councillor of this ward, we'll all be involved in one way or another.
One thing I was gonna say too is for anybody that doesn't know, not only are you a strong PWD advocate, but you're a very strong transit advocate. You've kind of started your, I don't wanna speak for you, but like I know, I used to be on Twitter and I know like if anybody goes on your Twitter wall, that they would know that you, you've always advocated very strongly for better transit solutions in the Toronto area, so.
Oh, well, 100%, you know, a little known fact about me, well, some people know, but a little known fact, I don't drive. I don't drive, so I take transit everywhere. So for me, it's the TTC and Go Transit trains. It's very important, I'll give you an example, I know one of the videos you're talking about, I took actually a few months before I was let go, I think it was last year in February sometime or whatever. But anyway, whenever that derailment was on the Scarborough Rapid Transit line, Line 3 it was known as. I did a video on it about a month before the actual accident happened. And man, that thing sounded like a roller coaster from hell for the last like five years, right? And that's what it is, it's about the safety. The issue is, is that there's so many issues that have been left to the side for so long. And I know there's a great councillor in there right now, that's the TTC Chair, his name's councillor Jamal Myers. I happened to work with him for about a year or two, helped out on his campaign as well. Very successful campaign. But, so these issues have been let go for too long. And what happens is the turnaround rate of staff members coming in and out, in and out, like our TTC CEO, I believe his name is Rick Leary, he's leaving the end of this month. So all these projects that are being talked about are gonna be talked about again two years from now in another election. So you have to have a concrete plan going forward. And yeah, the lived experience of being a rider, again, if I wasn't a TTC rider, I got no business speaking about the TTC because what the hell do I know, right? Get the experience and get involved and that's how you get success with these issues.
Another quick, another quick comment I was gonna make, Brendan, you can pile on and Dan can pile on too, is, you know, what do you think about these 10-year plans that governments are like to roll out too? It's like, in 10 years, we'll solve this issue, right? You know, we just had here in BC, they rolled out the new 10-year plan for reducing poverty. Reducing poverty, we're gonna have a new 10-year plan. And I just think, you know, this whole idea of kicking the problem down the road. Here's 10 years and then in 10 years' time or maybe in five years' time, they'll look at their 10-year plan again and say, here we got another 10-year plan, you know? And, you know, so.
As an example to that, it's going on right now here in Ontario. So a quick example of it is, everybody knows that Doug Ford is trying to take out the Ontario Science Centre, which happens to run through Ward 15, Don Valley West. So the fact that he's claiming to build transit, a transit line called the Ontario Line, going through that area, but he wants to take out one of the biggest attractions that attract not only people from outside the neighbourhood, but from inside the neighbourhood to have family time and learn some things, is beyond me, it doesn't make any sense. If anybody goes back and researches that Ontario Line, it used to actually be called the Downtown Relief Line. And I can remember being at meetings for way back in like, I don't know, 2012, where they were talking the same crap, right? 10-year plan, it's gonna get built, don't worry about it. Doug Ford comes in, he scraps it, he turns it into the Ontario Line and then he takes all the people away from the transit line. So you gotta come up with a plan, you gotta be agreeable to that plan with everybody and it has to be concrete. Because again, I could sit here and promise you guys the world, right? But the fact of the matter is the next election is actually in 2026, it's only two years away, right? So the other bonus you're gonna have with me is that you're gonna have a bunch of people in this by-election telling people what they wanna do for them, what they possibly will do when they get an office for them. But I can tell the people what I have done and what I'm gonna continue to do for that two years to keep it going forward.
Exactly, and that's so the most important part is, is to keep the advocacy going forward and having given people hope that, that yes, this is what I'm gonna keep advocating, this is what I'm gonna keep pushing to get the achievement of a better system put in place. Because that's what people wanna hear, they wanna hear the positives, not like, well, here's the 10-year vision. Well, how are we gonna get to that 10-year vision? It just drives me batty every time I hear these things because it's like kicking the can down the road, right? It's like, well, yeah, we got more to do, we got more to do, we got more to do, but it do, you know? Yeah, so like building our infrastructure to better our communities for better transit, that's just one example. And as everyone knows, I mean, I advocate very strongly about transit because I'm like yourself, Dan, I take transit everywhere, I don't drive. And so I rely on transit and when I can't get from point A to point B, there's a huge, you know, more of a barrier, I call it a incompetence, right? When it comes to government levels of not being able to deliver. I spoke to one of our representatives in the government a month ago and, yeah, we're working on it right now. But the question is, when is it gonna be done? Like it could be done years from now or it may not get done. And it just keeps putting it off to somebody else, right?
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to speak on too. And again, anybody can pipe in as well. But I would like to see it on all levels of government, instead of 10-year plans, let's reduce those down to three-year plans. And let's have, let's say, in year one, let's say, in year one, we promised these deliverables. And then in year two, we promised these deliverables. And in year three, we promised these deliverables. And because, you know, if you don't have, if you don't have goals, then how are you gonna measure success? If you just have these long range things of like, in 10 years' time, that means you can keep booting it down for the first nine years and say, well, we're gonna deliver everything in the last year or something, right? Because there's no accountability.
Well, and you just hit the nail on the head, right? Every single time, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to be picking on our premier, but whatever, it is what it is. Every time I see the guy get on TV and claim, okay, in eight years, we're gonna do this, in 10 years, we're gonna do this. How the hell can anybody in their right mind say that with confidence, knowing that your term is only four years, man? Like, come on, man. I can't sit here and promise the people of Don Valley West that I'm gonna build 50,000 units of housing in the next two years because that's ludicrous. You hit the nail on the head, you have to come up with a step-by-step plan. Because here in Toronto, I'm not sure how it works out there, I'm sure it's similar. But here in Toronto, you have to bring motions to committees. So long story short, what would happen is, the community or developer or whoever comes to the office and has an issue they wanna discuss and such. If it's deemed important enough to be made to a motion, it gets made into a motion and gets brought to the various committees that it applies to. At those committees, they decide whether to proceed forward without having to go to council or they proceed to council with that motion and vote on it as a whole. So there's nobody in their right mind that can sit there and say with 100% certainty, this is what I'm gonna do for you tomorrow. Because it doesn't happen like that, right? The first and only thing that I'll be promising in the first part of this campaign is that I will promise something. I promise to hold either monthly or bimonthly town halls in the various areas of Ward 15. That way, I can keep up to date with the issues that are going on and the community can keep up to date with the updates I have from the city. That's the way it works. Anybody else that says any different is a lying beep.
I just think it's really important to measure success, like have things in place where you can, where you can quantitatively measure the success you're having over the first year, over the second year, over the third year. And like you said, Dan, like all of these politicians, they're only guaranteed like four years in office and that's it. So there's no point in saying, here's a 10-year plan. If you're only gonna be in office guaranteed for four years, why not have three and four-year plans and say, you know, these are the things that I'm gonna have in place to measure success in year one, two, three and four, you know?
Have a deliverable at that time, like having steps to hit that goal. So if it's designing, getting a contractor to design, well, the first year is escalating it so that it's not delayed. So getting a designer in place, now you're gonna get the company that does all the materials, all the building. So and then getting all the, who's the vendor gonna be to build, to get all these trains done? Well, you get all that done as step-by-step and then it's implementation and in year, say, three or four is done, done deal. At least attempt to show that that's what's gonna get done. But I find that a lot of the bureaucrats, they promise the moon, but they never deliver, you know?
Well, and we can say that too on the, from a disability lens point of view and from a disability advocacy point of view. I mean, where is the accountability? Where is the proof and measurement of success in our social, social development programs put out by cities or by provinces to say, you know, here is, you know, here is a measure of success. Here is proof that the program is working or not working. Where is that? We never see that. It's just like, take our word for it that it's working and we never see proof of any kind of deliverable of like what's working and what's not. It's like, take our word for it and that's it, right?
Well, here's proof for you right here in doing this, right? You know, you guys know, but a lot of people in the ward might not know, like I was homeless 19 years back. 97 to 2016, I didn't have a pot to piss in. So these programs of harm reduction and mental health help obviously work. And I've been telling people across, like the past 24 hours across the ward and across the city, is that unless you've been there, you don't know. So I've been there, I know that these programs- So I've been there, I know that these programs work. And this is why I'm trying to get in and show people, even if you only help one person like me, you've helped one person survive. I shouldn't be here right now, but yet here we are having these discussions, right? So you gotta take those experiences, move forward with them, and like you said, step by step. Because again, there's nobody that serves a four year term, or in this case, in this by-election, two years, that can sit there and say, okay. I'm gonna fix everything, I'm gonna fix across town, I'm gonna fix your potholes. Because that's not the way it works, there's a procedure and and policies in place to continue forward to achieve those goals. But you have to have the will of everybody, and when you have some guy that's trying to tear the crap. Out of everything that's positive in this city, I'm telling Ward fifteen and the residents there, you need somebody like me at the table. Because once he sees my face, it's time to talk. I don't play around.
Yeah, I I think it's so important to uh for people to to recognize uh when like. What the issues are that are gonna benefit them in in the ward, like Ward fifteen of. So anyone in uh in Ward fifteen, uh here, here's, here's the man right here, um you know, he's gonna listen to your your concerns. So he's knocking at your door, you let him know, let him know, let Dan know that what's going on, what do you wanna see? Changed in your area, what affects your life right now? Um I mean, do you wanna see this uh this this center moved to another location? I mean, uh yeah, I mean, it disrupts everybody in the community, right? I mean, Dan, I mean, um I mean, to me. Uh hearing about that on the news, I heard about that too, I was, I shook my head, I'm thinking, this makes no sense. Well, why, why would the premier wanna move a a center that's been there for, I mean, decades? Uh it makes no sense to me, none.
He need, he needs to swallow another B. You you know, you know what, you know what I was gonna say though, is uh. You you we've, you know, I should say, like, you've run this uh podcast for. I mean, we we've, we re- relaunched it, we, it's been a year, year and a half on the relaunch, but I mean, again, like this used to be. On uh on Twitter Spaces, so it's been, you know, almost three years or so, Dan, that we are, or two and a half, that we've, we've known you. Like, you've been around since the beginning, and if if I, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna distill you down. If I'm gonna distill you down in 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 two words. Uh in two words, then if I was gonna distill you down into two words and put on a, on a T-shirt, it would be straight shooter. Like, like, you're about as straight as like, as straight as they come, right? You just call, you just call it as you see it. And I think that's, that's good, that's, there's not enough, there's not enough of that in 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 politics, right? I think, I think you need that, because if you're a straight shooter, it means you're honest. Uh to the, to the point of fault sometimes, and some, some people don't like honesty, I know that kind of pisses me off sometimes. Like, all my advocacy, when I see governments uh kind of turning a blind eye on what's honest. It pisses me off, right? But if you're a straight shooter, things like honesty matter and and things, you know. And uh I can say that with all honesty, like you are one of those people that, you know. Being a straight shooter matters and and honesty matters and being upfront matters, and even if you have to hurt somebody's feelings a little bit with honesty. I mean, that matters, right? It matters.
Listen, truth be told, right? There's a lot of people that are gonna be listening to this, you guys listen to it, you already know about this, right? I'm not a perfect angel, everybody knows that, right? I've had my ups, my downs, I'm still going through it, right? But the one thing is the honesty, because you know, not only is it easier to tell, you know, the truth than it is to tell a lie. Um but the fact is, we all here that have participated here on this channel. And everybody I've experienced, not only in Ward fifteen but across the city of Toronto, they want change, they want something to actually happen. And without telling the truth, when you keep shoving shit under the rug, keep lying about crap. For example, that Ontario Place thing, it's, it's not simple, but when I say it's simple, you understand what I mean. It's simple in the fact that, yeah, sure, it's old, okay? And the excuse the provincial government used was that the roof was all holy, right? But we just had a rain event a week or two ago, whatever it was there, and I didn't see no complaints about flooding at the Ontario Science Center, right? So we gotta start being honest with people that, you know, he wants to move it. So that he can have that centralized location down at Ontario Place to go along with the spa that he also got approved for his buddies, right? I don't give a shit what you wanna do in politics, your party is your party, I don't do party politics. But you have to put the people first. Do you think that people would care about a spa down at Ontario Place? If you were taking care of their social issues, their s- the housing, the homeless on the streets. Um holding people accountable for the car thefts and all the wrong that they're doing in the city.
Absolutely.
Be honest, work together on it, and again, people aren't gonna like every single thing you say. Some people are gonna appreciate my attitude and some people are gonna snub their mo- nose at me, right? And if I were to complain about every single thing that happened in the last year and a half and continue like that on with my life, there would be no accomplishment for anybody. So for me, if I'm hired, if I'm elected, and I say hired by the people. Sure, nice paycheck, great, but my number one concern is with the people, because the issues that are affecting them are affecting me.
Absolutely, Dan, uh I couldn't have said it any better than that. You you nailed, you definitely nailed right down uh right, right to the core uh and. And the core, the core of the issues is what affects people in in the community and within the city. Um and having a representative like yourself um to represent their interests is so important. Because you you can echo your, your lived experience and and listen to their experience of what they're going through and channel it to. Yeah, like this is, this is what I'm hearing, this is what we need to do, folks, like this, we need to get this done. Uh rather than these, you know, like I say, from a provincial level, uh these, these pet projects that um that are really. Um yeah, they may sound good, they may sound or uh splashy announcements, but what's affecting people's lives right now? Like, I mean, car thefts, homelessness, uh housing affordability, I mean, that's a huge thing across the whole country right now. I mean, I I mean, I I would do anything right now to move out of where I'm living, but I know I can't afford it, I I can't uh. You know, the housing uh prices are just way, way too high, that's another uh show in itself. Um but again, you know, like um having representatives listening going, okay, here, here's the problem, rather than. Well, let's just build, 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 well, are we gonna make it affordable? And then I'm sure that you'll hear these things at your door, at the doors, when you're door knocking is, you know, like, yeah, I I can't afford the cost of living. You know, food prices are going up to the roof, uh housing is way too expensive uh. Uh or the transit or whatever it may be, um. Uh I don't know, garbage collection is getting too expensive or whatever the topic may be, uh the crosswalk near uh my area has a flashing light. But I need it as a solving, solid light or a, some kind of an audible signal going across the crosswalk. Saying, you know, ca- caution, please stop, you know, pedestrian crossing or whatever the issues may be, I. I have that going on in my community too, if, if caution, uh vehicles may not stop. Well, I mean, that's great, the city put that in, but people are doing like Mach eighty, Mach ninety in a, in a, in a forty kilometer zone, I mean. What could go wrong? And you gotta flash your light there saying your speed limit is going fifty fifty, it's like flashing white, people going. You know, yeah, that's an issue I have, and when I have a chance, I'm gonna go to the city and. And uh and and let the council know, like, like this is what's going on, and so I really encourage people. Uh in the Ward fif- uh Ward fifteen in your area, uh Dan, um to basically uh let, let Dan know, like. Uh whatever your issue is, bring it to uh, bring it to the forefront and uh it'd be.
Hey, listen, great segue there, because uh we've been having the flashing lights here in Ontario and in Toronto for years about Doug Ford, right? And it's no secret, I don't, I don't like the guy, I don't like what his government's been doing. But in order to be a successful candidate for council, you have to have the understanding and ability. To put your personal stuff aside and work for the benefit of the whole community. So I'm not only working for the benefit of Ward fifteen Don Valley West, but I in turn want to use this time. If elected, to join people together and let them know that it's okay to have your differences, it's okay, we're not gonna agree on everything. But I hate what Doug Ford's done to the LTC homes, I hate what Doug Ford's done to the nursing and the education system here in Ontario, just to name a few. And now he's starting on the transit and the, it it, he called our neighborhood in Don Valley West sleepy neighborhood or something like that. If it's so sleepy, why are you putting transit and other housing up there, bro? So yet again, you'll have to have the ability to put all that aside and sit at a table, even if it's across from him. And say, listen, man, this is what's going on in the community, please help us, let's come to an understanding in the middle. And please help us, cuz there's so many great M P Ps down there, Kristen Wong Cam, Mary Margaret McMahon, Chris Glover, just to name a few. And I cannot off the top of my head name one great P C government official from our province of Ontario, and that's sad. We have to get to the point where we're helping everybody.
I just would, I just wanted to jump in and and back up the train a little bit, Dan, uh cuz. I'm I'm gonna try to quote what you said a moment ago, and and you said, uh you know, that you you want to represent the people in in. In 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 Ward fifteen, because what matters to them matters to you. And I don't think that that can be actually overstated enough, because like all three of us here. Have basically been advocates our whole lives, right? And 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 I can say for myself, like I've been a, I've been a staunch advocate for the lo- for the last eleven years because of my. Because of my clawback of my suburban mansion, that's the one thing I'm really passionate about, right? But but way before that, like each one of us sitting here today, we've had to advocate every moment of our lives. From, basically from the time we were, we were born, right? Like with your, with your uh. Uh blindness, Brent, or your your sight impairment, and with with my cerebral palsy. Like, I I was born with it and you were born with with your thing and and and, you know, Dan was was, you know. Had to deal with his own life experience, so so like. We we're all coming to this like with a lot of years of, you know, blood, sweat and tears. And and like, again, if I was gonna use my own example, um you know, like with the, with the clawback thing, I could say, well. You know, that matters to me, but at some, at some point. Like issues become bigger than that, right? Like, I remember uh telling my parents, when I was like two or three years into the battle of the clawback. I was like, you know, I almost don't care if I win anymore, it's not about winning. It's, it's, it's the fact that it's, it's, it's about doing the right thing, the right thing that is the thing that matters. And whether I'm successful or not, d- doesn't matter, it's, it's that I'm. I'm making it a success for other people in the future, like I'm, I'm putting my stamp down and pu- I'm putting my foot down. Cuz it matters not only just to me, it matters to like, like the the thousands of people that come after me, it's gonna matter, right?
Well, absolutely, um and that's what advocacy is, um it's so important and it, it doesn't matter on. What you're advocating for, um and what's nonpartisan, like a nonpartisan issue of. Uh what political party is actually in, um it's on who's gonna represent your best interest on changing. Um regulations, right? It's regulations that affect people's lives, um is it to do with housing, is it to do with transit? With the reasons why there's so many hiccups in in our society and, uh I mean, I have a lot of um. Uh in- interests, should we say, um what I advocate for, I mean, a lot of people uh used to know me for the, the three seventy five guy. Right, uh for the shelter.
That's how I, that's how I knew you.
Yeah, yeah, and then the government changed, they go, okay, well, after so many years, it's like, you know, that is that that rhetoric, you know what I mean? Well, let's put it up to five hundred dollars, okay, well, that's still not good enough, you can't rent anywhere in in B C or anywhere across the country for five hundred dollars. And not in market housing, you can't, and again, it's that, it's that stereotype, it's saying, well, yeah, um. Okay, well, you want housing, okay, well, you'll have to go under our housing provider. Um yeah, for for cheaper housing, well, now we got all these regulations in place. Um and then like, and I'm not gonna use this as a uh as any beneficial to any political party. But I I went to a a party last night and uh and I'll, I'll say it out there, I went to the Green Party, Party in B C. Um and it was amazing, like it was amazing, not just because of the party of of, it was a green party, it could have been the. The purple party or the blue party or whatever party it was, but listening to the people there of. Of lived experience, like listening to people from a distance of of stories of saying. Uh yeah, like I hear you, like affordability, uh I heard the word transit, I heard about the cost of living. Um and when I mentioned, um when I mentioned about that. Uh my interview I had on C K N W, like about my interview, but a phone call in. And I mentioned about that, uh you know, my landlord gave me a rent, uh gave me a rent increase. I got no rent, I got no increase by uh the provincial government on my check. And the landlord says, well, why didn't you get an increase? I go, I don't know. And so that was the question I asked the premier at the time, and there was a soundbite that that we tried, uh you know, getting out there. Uh I was able to, actually, I had a lot of great interest uh last night. And people were asking me, can I hear that? Can I hear that? So I said, yeah, like here's, here's the part of the actual broadcast under the vault. And so people want to go and listen to it again, um you know, if you wanna listen to the whole uh episode in this entirely. It's uh July twenty fifth at nine o'clock, you can go and listen to the whole uh segment.
Yeah, I I think it's around, if, to be specific, it's it's uh, it's July twenty fifth. Uh at at nine, about nine twenty two, if they, if they fast forward to about nine twenty two. That's roughly when you, when you come on and ask your question, roughly, right, right around there.
Yeah, another thing we can advocate for is better internet connections, man, sorry, I keep getting beat up by connection, my bad.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, and I've had days like that and, and you know, and so anyone like this interested to know like what the conversation on that, again, like, you know. Um I advocating for, not just for myself, but um I use my, my landlord as an example, because a lot of people. Uh they say, yeah, I'm going through the same thing, like I, you know, I got a uh, I got an increase, but I got no increase on my income, why? And again, and that was the question I was trying to get across to our premier was, not just for me. And with the response I got was, yeah, you know, I, I I hear you, like there's more that, you know, like we're working on things. Like, we're, we we know we need to work on more, I don't know if it was exactly the words of that, but people could listen to it. But that's pretty well the gist of it was like, yeah, we recognize that we we need to do more on that. Uh but again, it was a deflection of saying, and this is nothing against uh any political party. But it was like answering a direct question, like I had a direct question, why not? And this was to my landlord, like, not just to me, it was to my landlord saying, like, why didn't you give the guy an increase? Or any P W D in the province an increase to pay their landlord, cuz they live in market housing. And so you have to now cut somewhere else, and when your rates haven't been increased and they've been subjected down to forty to fifty percent below the poverty level. And the poverty level is a standard, uh just a standard of living, and we can get into another segment on that altogether.
Yeah, and and I I will say, and I think I said this, said this when we, when we aired the clip originally, you know, a couple podcasts ago. Um but the 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 thing that bothered me the most was how condescending his answer was toward. Towards you specifically, because he says, well, he's like, I don't know if you know this, Brent, nudge, nudge, wink, wink. But but did you know that you can, that you can actually work and and earn money without, without clawback?
Right, right, yeah.
You know, and it was very condescending, like, you know. If you know, if you know better, Brent, maybe you, maybe you don't know, but if you knew better, you know, kind of, kind of thing.
Yeah, and I I played that clip um last night because some uh um candidates actually wanted to hear that. And so I, I was kind of reluctant to play it and I thought, okay, there's a little clip, and so I played that, and they were astonished. They were astonished that um. That occurred, that that's a way, that's kind of almost like a wager on it saying, well, yeah, this is the reason why we're not in increasing the rates. Because hey, there, every P W D can get out there and get a job, if you didn't know this, you could get out there and get a job. Because, because while the the previous administration, you know, they they only raised the rates uh maybe just a little bit in sixteen years. I've learned in my advocacy years, everyone, that not to keep blaming the previous government. Like, like we are in the now, right now, right? How can we go forward, work with the problem? Who doesn't matter, like, it it's like my mom used to give me hell, like, and God rest her soul, but her and I used to have the same discussion. I would say, well, the the neighbor's kids, they got this and and they got that, how come I didn't get this and they got that? My mom goes, Brent, stop doing the blame game, let's focus on now, what what can we do is maybe get the neighbor kids together. And we can come to a common ground. And when I hear these things, it's like, well, sixteen years, seven years, sixteen years, seven years or eight years, it's like, hello. Let's live in the now, how can we fix problem? How can we eliminate, not reduce or or uh, you know, or or reduction? How can we eliminate poverty now? Easy solution, easy peasy. Bring it up to a standard of living, tie it to a inflation, the cost of living, COLA, COLA, cost of living adjustment. People ask me, what does COLA stand for? I've had that a few times now, COLA, cost of living adjustment. Is that gonna be the end all of end all solutions? No, no. There's a lot more dynamics of why, um, why people are, don't have the standard of living. It's the housing also too, right? It affects the, the amount of income that they have. Some people say, well, I'm gonna be homeless now because, well, I can't afford the market rent. But I've got now, I've got more money to live on. That's not, that, you know, that's not right either, right? We need to underline.
That's why you need all hands on deck, right? No contribution is too small. So you two gentlemen seem to me as more of policy-driven guys, whereas my experience would be on the streets, direct with the issues. And that's why I'm taking it straight to, uh, Toronto City Council and Ward fifteen. Is because the everyday issues that affect us all, whether you mentioned earlier garbage, uh, whether it be transit, uh, your housing, what have you, those are all municipally, uh, handled issues. So again, you need that lived experience at the table or else we're gonna be continuing to go in this spiral. I can't tell you how many councillors out of twenty-five right now have been there more than fifteen, twenty years. Okay. And what's happening? The same issues time and time and time again, right? So we have to come to that understanding where we can't keep going on like this because sooner or later, you know, somebody's gotta tap out, whether it be constituents, whether it be the city itself as a corporation, whether it be the province or the country, like somebody's gotta tap out because there's only so far the well goes, right? So you have to have somebody also with the ability that can go in there, know who to talk to and get the job done. Without that ability, it's never gonna happen.
Like the merry-go-round, right? It's like the merry-go-round. You mentioned that merry-go-round's gotta stop and you gotta now focus on the, on the problems and that she starts solving these things. Otherwise, it's just like, it's like the cat chasing its tail, right? Around and around.
I was gonna use the football analogy, you know, where you have, uh, two teams on the field, uh, that, you know, you, you get two teams on the field and you, you agree to toss the football around, but then it's like, one team decides, well, you know what? I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm just gonna walk off the field and, and not play the game anymore. And you guys can, can just play amongst yourselves and, and we're just gonna go and, and find another, find another team to play with because we're, we're tired of playing with you now.
In the middle, or you got the piggy in the middle. Here, here, we will say, hey, I wanna dealt with. Well, here, catch, catch, back and forth.
Yeah.
Oh, a hundred percent. And that's, and that's why too, somebody that's running for city council has to have the ability to put all that shit aside, right? And focus on the people because when push comes to shove, the people of the municipality you run in, in this case, which happens to be Toronto, are the people that fucking pay your paycheck. And you're there to represent them. Do your job. One thing that gets my goat, I don't know if you guys notice it, our council, but it gets my goat when the speaker has to sit there and say, can councillors please take their seat? You're paid to be a goddamn city councillor. Be in your seat for that time, that duration of that meeting and do your job. But at the same time, have an understanding and respect for your, what are gonna be my colleagues when I take that seat in Ward fifteen. You have to have the respect for your colleagues, even if you disagree with them. And I'll tell you right now off the hop, there are some councillors that I disagree with, plenty. But this isn't about me. This isn't Ward Dan. This is Ward fifteen. It's about the people.
Yeah, it's about a mutual understanding that work together, um, regardless of, you know, you have disagreements or agreements and, but working all, uh, working all together and knowing that everyone's gonna try to do the very best to accomplish, uh, everything in their community. Um, absolutely. Like, I mean, I, I ran against, uh, different advocates from time to time too. I mean, different ways of maybe looking at things. But at the end of the day, we all come together and want to accomplish from different points of view of accomplishing everything, right? And it's like making a better society for everybody. And I, I learned that last night. Um, and like it was, it was really awesome in the environment. Like it was, uh, the energy was there. People wanted to see change. They, they're tired of the same old, same old. Like they, they just want to see uh, positive impact on their lives and how do we make things better? Uh, and when I, when they started hearing about, uh, about my advocacy and Sonia's advocacy and Jeff's advocacy, yeah, it was just like, hey, I know you. And yeah, like I heard about your podcast. I'm like, oh, wow. Like first thing that came out was, I heard about your podcast. I'm like, oh, wow, really? Yeah. And the word of mouth got around. So I started handing out business cards. Here you go. One for you, one for you. And I handed a whole bunch of them.
Next year, next year, you'll be handing, handing out mugs and T-shirts.
Yeah, yeah.
And good on you for that, good on you for that work, right? Because if you didn't use your voice, those people wouldn't hear about it and they wouldn't know about it. The, the, the straight up fact is everybody knows and I'm not bitching and whining, but everybody knows that mainstream media controls everything about it. So whatever they want to be heard, that's what gets let out, right? So it's good that we have people like yourselves and people like other independent, and there are mainstream media that are great, great people. Um, but, but just too often this shit just flies by and you only get what you hear, right? So especially with elections here, and this is where I'll make my final statement so I don't get cut out again. But this is with elections here. You have to focus on the people, focus on the issue and just be straight up.
Yeah, that's a good mic drop moment. I was gonna say we're, we're at the end of the hour anyway, so that's good.
Yeah, um, and I, I greatly appreciate that your, your ending comment on that, uh, Dan, and, uh, nicely said on that again, um, as usual, uh, always, always, um, and like what affects people, um, like whatever issue affects people in their, in their community, especially in Ward fifteen in your area. Um, definitely, uh, I really encourage you, everyone to, uh, definitely get out there and actually during the, uh, at the by-election there, to definitely vote, um, and make, uh, make your voice heard, um, and listen to, um, listen to, um, you know, all the stories that, um, that, that are going out there of how it affects people's lives. How do we make positive change? And the door knocking is the, is the key for sure. And, uh, I'm sure you're gonna hear a lot of, uh, a lot of feedback and, um, definitely on that. I mean, if it comes down to whatever the issue is, uh, I mean, like for, it, when I talk about trend, when I talk about trends that I rant and rave, and why I rant and rave so much is because it needs to be a basic standard of service in my, in my community and area here is, uh, when it doesn't just affect me, when it starts affecting other people that, that I get to know throughout the community. Uh, Sonia's mom and dad, they hear about transit. What do you mean you can't get throughout the day? You can't go to and from a community? That makes no sense. Well, no, like to me, I, I've been advocating for that for, since we've been living in Victoria. Has it changed? No. No, it hasn't. I mean, there's more work to do. As I keep hearing, there's more work to do. Well, come on. How long does it take to do it? I knew a person who did transit planning. And he would be pulling his harrow, God rest his soul. Him and I used to meet up for coffee and we talked about routes. And I mean, he'd be so upset about that. He would have already had that planning done already. He would have had uh, at least, um, at least eight trips a day throughout the day scattered, not all every hour, but scattered. So that people can get to and from a community. They invest in the community that they go to. They actually help small businesses grow. That's how, that's how we, we grow our, our community and our society is we, uh, provide these services that people can actually move across regions. And my main goal is I brought this forward last night, um, Dan, and I, I wanted your feedback before we, uh, before we end the segment too. I brought an idea that I said, I wanna see regional transportation across this country again. I said, it has to be done. We need to do it. Greyhound, everyone knows that we had Greyhound Canada. Unfortunately, we all know the fate, what happened there. They asked for help. Greyhound Canada asked for help from our federal government. What, what? And it was too late. Like they could have temporarily helped them maybe work out a new strategic plan on, on how they up, run their service. Unfortunately, it just, they pleaded for help every angle. I even heard from in B C, they asked for help back then. It, it, nothing happened. So they, uh, well, we know what happened. They, they went up, they went under.
They give buckets and buckets to, to transit, but they, you know, it was really stupid that they gave nothing.
Yeah. And so, and they can now, they can't even run regional transit system. So I, I brought an idea forward and, and there was a couple of ladies there last night. They thought that was totally amazing. I, I got to meet Elizabeth May last night. I, I got to meet Sonia first and all, uh, uh, again in person. I got to meet Adam Olson in person. I got to meet a lot of the candidates that are gonna be running. Uh, they, uh, they said they really, um, appreciate all of our advocacy, all the way across Canada. Every single advocate that's fighting for, uh, new change to happen across our beautiful country, uh, not just in British Columbia. And so they, they think they want to pass on that message and echo it forward, saying thank you for all the advocates that are really pushing for change to happen. Uh, we talked about Mike Morris too, Elizabeth May. And she, she, uh, really, uh, she really appreciates us having Neil, uh, um, uh, having Mike on, on here. She said, uh, you guys are just totally amazing. And I said, well, thank you. And she's such, such, she's such a card. She's, she's, uh, just, you know, meeting her in person, I've always wanted to do that. She said, I remember you. She said, I remember it. So to Sonia, I, hey, I re-remember you guys. You were at a train station. I go, that's right. She said she didn't get a chance to say hi, but she recognized us. And then going forward, she now, she recognized us, uh, you know, through, uh, our advocacy. So, yeah, again.
Well, I said off air, like that I, that I met her back in, uh, twenty, twenty-ten.
Yeah.
At, at a, um, it was an abilities expo in twenty-ten where, where I was selling my book, my Daddy Bentley's book. And she comes up, up to my, my table, wearing some, some on my book. And she says, I don't know if you know who I am, but I really wanna buy your book. And I, I said, are you kidding? Of course I know who you are. And like really super humble lady, just like an amazing woman, right? And I was just so impressed. But, but she took the time. She said, I really wanna read your book. It's, it sounds amazing. So, yeah, it was, it was really cool. Yeah.
Yeah. When, when she, uh, she went out of her way and, um, walked up to us, uh, right away. She spotted us and, uh, she big smile and on her face. And she was so happy. So generally just so, so happy that we were, that we showed up. You know, due to advocacy, like I, I wanna see what's going on and, and, you know, and automatically hearing about our, about the advocacy, that really stood out right away. Like, uh, people are saying, wow, yeah, I, I've heard about the podcast. I've heard, you know, um, and I said, I was on the radio. Well, and everyone wanted to hear right away. What was this radio broadcast? And, and I don't know how many times it kept winding up. Like, can you forward it on to me? Can you send me this? Like people wanted to hear about the advocacy work. And regardless of, of, uh, nonpartisan, like, like from other angles, they wanted to hear how, how that's affecting people's lives. And I, I said, I was to a point where I wanted to say more at, at this, at the time, but I was, uh, um, exasperated. Like it was just like, okay, like I have nothing more to say at the time. And I had.
I agree with you on that transportation stuff too, right? Sorry to interrupt you. I got a delay again. But, uh, you know, especially here in Toronto, like, uh, in Ward fifteen, the two major transportation issues are, uh, what's known as the Ontario line and the Agintic crosstown, as we spoke about before, right? Um, but the fact of the matter is there's, you know, so many variables, different terrains, uh, different amount of people living in certain areas. So where streetcars might work some places, sub, subways might work in other places, right? So I think we have to focus going forward on project by project basis. And like Neil was mentioning earlier, something like coincide all the projects together and go step by step. Uh, cause without that information and without the ability to do that, I do not know how you continue on the way they are, right? Uh, project to project, getting halfway through one and then partially starting another, like it's so stupid. Just get it done. People deserve something, you know, when they did the planning in this city about ten fifteen years ago, they did the planning backwards. And they did all this condo boom. Everybody was like, yay, you own.
Yeah.
But somebody somewhere along the line forgot to think about plumbing underneath the ground. Forgot to think about the, the, uh, validity of, of the roads and transfer. So there's so many.
Parking, even parking, like where you're gonna park your cars.
God, you ever tried parking here? I'd be cursing if I was a driver here, man. I'd be.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, you've got all the infrastructure needs to be built around, not just like housing bill, bill, bill. Well, you need all the, you need, you need your transit, you need, um, you know, all your, your water mains, um, everything built around, schools, uh, recreation centers, everything pools, doesn't matter what it is, it needs to be all built around. Remember, remember SimCity? How do you build a city? Yeah, I used to love that. I used.
I used to love it too, yeah.
Yeah.
Put all, put all the pipes underneath and all, hook up all the electricity and everything was.
That makes sense. So, uh, right? That makes sense. That's how we build a city. Uh, maybe they, I don't know, maybe the, the ones who make these decisions go back and maybe look at SimCity, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, you know, like I say, that comes down to like, they say the frustration of things that make sense, right? It's, we all, we all have great ideas, um, you know, doesn't matter what level of government, city councils. I mean, working together, like provinces, uh, you know, it's, uh, prime minister, work together, work together, listen to lived experience. Not just all the ones that are at the very top going, well, I have an idea. This is, this is how we're gonna do it. Well, no, like listen to everybody, have everybody's feedback in it and, and can get these projects all done. Uh, cause it's like simple things that make sense. Yeah, usually, uh, it's based on lived experience. That's why it makes sense, right? So we get it all done. Uh, I know, I know it can be done, but we need to get it done like within a step-by-step goal. Because when I say, well, we can get it done, that's what I hear. Uh, we're working on transit. We're gonna get it done. When? Well, we're working on it. When? Well, now, okay, but when's it gonna be done? Uh, yeah. So that's all I hear, right? It's all, that's the crickets, right?
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, it, it's, um, it was, it was amazing, um, hearing about, uh, different advocacy stuff last night. Um, going forward, uh, I just encourage people to, uh, to look at, as one of our other guests that we had on, look at the policies, folks. Look at the policies, uh, for.
Another Dan, Dan Davies.
Yep, we have, we have.
Dan Davies was the one that said, look at the policies.
Yeah, we, we have a provincial election, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. And, uh, yeah, it's gonna be an interesting one. Uh, I don't want to tell people provincially who to vote for. I'm not, I'm gonna, you know, I'm, I'm nonpartisan when it comes to that. Um, I want people to look at what policies in, in regulations. Regulations is the key word. So all this garbage that's thrown into these regulations, clawbacks, clawbacks, uh, all these stipulations, why this is happening? Look at the party, like look at these things and who's gonna change these? Like say, well, if you get me in, okay, well, are you gonna do this? Like there has to be some kind of accountability. I don't know, like maybe we can kind of elaborate on that a little bit, but, um.
Well, I mean, we, we are, we are at the end of the episode, but, but I, what I did wanna say though is like, you, you are right, is that we, we have always strived to be nonpartisan.
Yeah.
Uh, there are good people on all sides. I, 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 I can't say that, you know, Dan Davies is amazing. I mean, I mean, if you, if you don't like, uh, some, some, somebody might say, you know, I don't like, uh, B C Liberal or B C United, the, the United Policy or whatever, and that's fine. Or, you know, I don't like, uh, I don't like B C N D P or whatever, right? But, but the, the fact of the matter is there's just good people on all sides. And I, I can say Dan Davies is one of those, uh, you know, he's, he's a solid human being. And just like, you know, Dan Trace here is a solid human being.
Yeah.
And I, I think, I think regardless of party, we gotta start looking at the person. Uh, you know, I, I always, I have always tried to, to value the person over, over a party. In, in a lot of cases, right? I always, I always look at the person and like he said, or like what, what Dan, um, Dan Davies said, look at the policies as well. And I mean, I know if, if we had him on, I mean, he said, he said, uh, you know, very blunt, blunt, bluntly before too, he says, you know, at some point you have to be partisan. Like he actually said that, I, I know, I, I think last year when we had him on, he says, at some point you have to be partisan. You have to, you have to kind of toe your party line. You have to say, this is where I stand as a party. So you can't, you can't be neutral all the time. So you, at some point you have to pick, you have to pick your lines. You have to say, I agree with this, with this policy, this party, but so much of it is, is about the person too. And again, there's lots of really great people in, uh, in politics regardless of a party. Um, but yeah, I think it's important that you gotta look at the policy. You go, you gotta look at, you know, staying within the lane of what, what a party represents and say, I identify with, with what this party is saying. Um, you know.
And even the person, even, especially the person too, because what they, uh, what they represent for their community, like I had, uh, one of my neighbors when I was just, oh, like I was about, uh, yeah, I just turned ten. And I still remember one of my neighbors, um, I didn't know too much about how the city stuff worked. I mean, I was just a kid. But I remember my mom talking to our next door neighbor, standing over a fence and, and saying, um, well, you know, congratulations on, um, you know, being elected in the, in the city, like as a city council. I remember that. And, but the, the neighbor was, was really gung ho on wanting to see, um, like as a garbage pickup. It was in the area and it was an issue because they would only come by on certain days and, and they wanted it changed. Well, she was able to get that changed. Um, I, I didn't, I didn't really care for the neighbor too much personally. But I cared for the advocacy of, well, how that person wanted to see things changed. And then as I got older, I, I really did care then. I started understanding more about my neighbor of, and, uh, I became really good friends with, with, with the neighbors', uh, kids too. And, and it was, it was great because we all, we all have our part in advocacy and all wanting to see change within our communities. Uh, and so, yeah, like it's, it's so important to, to really focus on what is that, what is the candidate um, wanting to accomplish, um, based on lived experience and, uh, yeah.
And that, and that's for. And that, and that's precisely why I'm doing what I'm doing, right? At municipal level, there's no parties, right? So I'll, 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 like, and that's why you gotta continue to do what you do and what others do, right? And I'll end with this so that I don't get cut off again. I'm gonna take off after this comment. But I I, you know, I thank you guys for the platform and I thank the people for listening and the people that will listen to this. Um, I believe the early voting is October twenty sixth or twenty seventh. I'll put more up on the Twitter account. I'm only using the Twitter account now for the campaigns, so there won't be no BS or any other crap going on there. Um, but yeah, the Edmonton crosstown, the Ontario Science Center, safety in our community and building back up our community from what we've lost. And building upon what we've built with former councillor Jay Robinson, that's the way we've got to go forward in Ward fifteen. So I look forward to it and totally appreciate you guys, man.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks for coming on. Thank you so much. This has been a wonderful episode with you. Uh, and, uh, good luck with on the campaign on that. Um, I wish you great success. Um, we're gonna do a follow-up on, uh, on how the year progress is going with this. Keep us posted on what you're hearing at the doors. I mean, I'm really intrigued to hear what people are having to say, what the changes they want that they're hearing at the doorsteps. Uh, going forward.
Yeah. Well, he's, he's gone now, uh, but we can sign off now.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, thanks, everybody for tuning in.
Thanks, everyone. Uh, thanks for, uh, tuning in today and I hope you appreciate the, uh, all the information and the, uh, you know, what what we do on, you know, our, our podcasts. Uh, it's always enlightening. Uh, I get positive feedback, uh, you know, quite a bit, um, definitely through advocacy and through going through, uh, different meetings, uh, from here and there. And, uh, you want to stay up to date, please subscribe as usual, uh, over to the YouTube channel here. Um, there'll be some Breaking With Brent segments. There's been some coffee time segments through the month of August. Um, I'm gonna be taking, like I mentioned before in a previous podcast, I'm just taking some time off. I'm not sure what I'm gonna be doing, uh, for a couple of weeks, two and a half weeks or whatever, but I'll be here and there. So when you see, when you see, uh, Breaking With Brent or could be possibly a travel segment, coffee time. Could be all, all in one. Could be all one, interesting one, right?
I'll just smash it all together, yeah.
Yeah, 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 exactly. But I want you just to, uh, you know, uh, travel along with me. And, uh, we'll see, see what happens. But regardless of, um, what my, I'm gonna be doing, I want everyone to enjoy the rest of the summer. Uh, to, uh, however that may be for you. And, um, stay tuned into later into August. Uh, as we have, uh, another guest that's gonna be coming up, uh, later in August.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And we, and we do, uh, you know, as always, we do encourage people to, uh, you know, if they want to come on the podcast, let us know. Drop us a line, let us know. We're always into, uh, you know, bringing voices forward and like, uh, you know, like I've always said, this is, this is your baby, Brent. It's always been your baby, but I I just feel like this is the little podcast that could, you know, kind of thing. And, uh.
Exactly. I mean, and you want to come onto the show and then talk about what, you know, what do you want to see changed? Right? It's all about lived experience and it's always been about lived experience. But also I I like to put like a little angle on it too, where I also want to hear about from people like, uh, from like, what do you want to see changed as as, uh, you know, nonpartisan, right? Cause, uh, you know, I I don't want to be throwing darts at, you know, back and forth at, uh, different politicians because really like, um, it all comes down, like I said, it's all, uh, well, I mean, it's policies, right? It's, uh, it's in regulations as on who's gonna best in, uh, serve your best interest on changing these, getting rid of all these regulations. Um, so if you want to, you know, come on and talk about these things with us, uh, that'd be great. Cause I want to hear like, what do you want to see changed? Like, how are things, these, um, crises, I call them. Uh, actually probably could even escalate it up to state of emergencies really. Because our healthcare system is crumbling, right? We all know that. We're in a housing crisis and I get it. Like, it's, it's not cheap, right? People hear about me renting, raving all the time, but we want to move. Sonia and I talk about this all the time. Even when I'm not even on the podcast, we talk about, I want to move to another place. I go, I get it. I get it.
I can vote for that. I can vote for that.
Yeah, and and Neil, Neil hears this all the time to me too. Uh, trust me, Sonia and Neil hear about this all the time. And again, I want the government to, and this is nothing against our provincial government. It really, it comes down, I mean, they're in power still, right? But it comes down to your regulations, right? It comes down to your policies. So whoever is in government, well, you're, you go, oh, I'm in government now. No, I'm in government. I remember him saying that then. Okay, so whoever is going like going forward, change it. Just change the damn thing, okay? And I I don't, I'm gonna say, I'm not gonna swear, I'm gonna say, change the damn thing, okay? Cause it really affects the person's wellbeing, their decision-making, number one, where do they want to live? What community do they want to live in? Um, like, so they should be able to live, I mean, where they want. I always keep hearing that rhetoric of, well, person should be able to live and be in the community that they want to be in. Well, then make it happen, right?
And that's my, that's my thing too, is like, if something is broken, something is is broken, make it unbroken. Like, don't just, don't just leave it broken. If it's broken, that that means you need to fix it. Don't just leave it broken. Fix it and make it unbroken.
Cause like, here's, here's, here's the problem. When, when I mentioned about BC housing and I, I could go on a whole tangent, but I won't. But when I heard about these, these regulations and policies, I brought this forward last night at, um, at a open house meeting at a party. And I said it was about BC housing, cause I let them hear the CKW clip, but David E B and I had that discussion. And he mentioned about housing. We are, we're, we're working at getting housing, uh, built, um.
And we all know how wonderful BC housing is, how unbroken that is, right?
Yeah, and they, they want to, uh, to eliminate, uh, homelessness. Well, I can tell you, uh, to get into BC housing. If you, uh, if you know, uh, say, um, oh, I, I'm like, I, I pointed out, uh, to a couple of people last night. I said, okay, you see that person over there? Yeah, okay. So if I wanted to move in with that person over there, right, or you did, I said, to the lady. If you wanted to move in with that person over there, BC housing would not allow you to do that. What? Nope. They wouldn't allow you to do that. Why? Because you're not in a relationship. You're not in a, you're, or you're not married. You're not in a relationship. You could be friends or you could, uh, or roommates, like you may know that person, but as soon as you both move into that, into there, you're now in a relationship.
Yeah.
You now fall under their guidelines, regulations.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, I go, yeah. And I, and I told her, I said, I told BC housing, this needs to change. Well, the government sets this, a regulation, I go, well, then it needs to change.
And don't you dare say it's discriminatory. Don't you dare say it's discriminatory.
Yeah.
You know.
I, and I mentioned that people just need enough money for housing. So here, here's the solution. So P, uh, the majority of PWD that live in market housing right now, right now, okay? And that's, I'd say, I don't know exactly, I'd say about ninety percent. So maybe ten, ten percent, maybe twelve percent live in DC housing. We always.
Ten to twelve, ten to twelve.
So, you know, and as the number dwindles down, because a lot of, uh, BC housing ones, uh, some of them are actually getting sold off too.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's why.
Evictions are going, rent evictions are going up. So that twelve percent is is going down to eleven or ten now, yeah.
I'd say we're probably at ten percent now. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
At the most, at the most people. And here's the thing, there's like a fourteen-year waiting list. There was one, uh, uh, person that was on CKW on that audio clip, if everyone's interested, go back and listen to it July twenty fifth at nine o'clock. You listen to the whole series, uh, the whole segment if you want, you can listen to, uh, different conversations that our premier had. There was one part where a person had indicated fourteen years on a waitlist. Okay, so you, you know, you have to, uh, be on a waitlist. I mean, people just want enough money for housing. So here is, raise the rates up to a livable income. Uh, Jeff Leggett talks about this all the time. I talk about this all the time. Sonia talks about this all the time. A lot of our guests talk about this all the time. They just want to have enough money to, uh, she survive, uh, in in our wealthy country. Nobody, nobody should be living in legislated, uh, rate, I'll call.
Regulated poverty, we're calling it now.
The poverty, we're gonna, going forward, we're gonna change the narrative on this. Okay, so, yeah, that, that, that's practice on this. Legislated, regulated policy.
Yeah, wow. Yeah, instead of, instead of, instead of legislative poverty, it really should be regulated poverty. Because, because all, all of it is in, is tied up in, in bad regulations. It's bad regulations that have all the poverty stuff in it, in there.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, and they could, they could very easily change that regulation in, under an hour. They could just burn the whole thing and say, you know what, we'll just do a, a carpet burn of the whole thing and and get rid of it all, but they don't.
I used to have a DVD R. I remember the writable, uh, discs. I used to copy a disc over to the other one. So all you have to do is copy a person's, a PWD file over to another one, another disk, okay? And so now we do on a temporary template. And I used to work with templates. I know, I learned this in college. A temporary template, copy the information over, okay? We're gonna rebuild, we're gonna rebuild the whole database. Now, in the meantime, while we're doing this, we're gonna delete the old regulations. Okay, so now, okay, regulations are now getting deleted. Your PWD file is on a temporary template. We're now putting the new state-of-the-art computer system in, right? Now, one that was supposed to be delivered this year, so far, nothing. But don't worry, there's an election coming. Don't worry, there's an election coming. So, so what we're doing now is what we're gonna get the PWD file, we're putting it back onto the new template. And now we're putting, oh, regulations, what regulations? There's no regulations anymore, because they've been deleted, right? So now, we're actually lived in, we're listening to lived experience. I think that's what's gonna happen. What do you think, Neil?
I I would love to see that happen.
All the pink unicorns would disappear?
Yeah.
I heard about that last night. Oh, I heard about clawbacks. The key word, clawbacks.
Yeah.
And they said, so Brent, you were said, they like, if you haven't really looked into this, uh, you, you may want to look into maybe, maybe getting a job. I, if that works good for you. So I heard the word clawbacks. So Brent, we want you to get that. Oh, so that we could claw off your.
Yeah. Get a jo, get a job so we can claw.
Somebody said that to me. They said, so we can claw that up. I said, but I had a job. I injured myself multiple times over time. As we get older, we get more disabilities. Exactly. I go, so I've already been down that, that rodeo, like, I've already been down that way. We gotta need to listen to people. I, it's just a spin. It's, as, as, as all it is.
Yeah.
Uh, the premier knows the answer. The other previous predecessor knew the answer. Christie Clark, the premier, knew the answer. Uh, and we had Gordon Campbell knew the answer, right? Before then, we can go down memory lane.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we, we could be on here for another hour, Brent. I don't know, I don't know if we should. But I just, my one closing comment is, you know, again, with, with David E B's comment, I thought it was very condescending. And the fact that he even threw in BC housing as the solution, when he knows, when he knows that it, it only represents a ten percent solution for, for ten percent of people with disabilities. The other ninety percent, he says that housing does nothing. I mean, I mean, he knows, he knows.
Imagine a whole group of people, okay, they all want housing. And say, I don't know, I'll just make up, I'll just make up a scenario. I don't like making up scenarios, but, okay. So we got a four-bedroom, we got a four-bedroom BC housing, which they don't exist. We got a four-bedroom BC housing. And we're gonna put, um, we're gonna put a bunch of bunk beds into there. Okay, so now we got eight, we got possibly eight beds in a, in a four-bedroom unit. So those eight people, imagine, all eight people, PWD coming there. Oh, in order to do it, they all have to be in a relationship. Really? They, they, they just know each other. Nope, according to them. And again, that's all pink unicorns. So when, when he mentioned about, oh, about housing, that's not gonna work, right? Let's, let's work together. Let's work on getting our rates up there. People, PWD who want to live in market housing, let them be. Let them be. Let's bring it up to a standard level. People that are in PWD that are in subsidized housing, co-op housing, uh, whatever it may be, under the BC housing umbrella, let them be. Like, let them live there. That's fine, right? But work with the scenario here. Don't, it's right now, it's like saying, well, you want cheaper housing, you need to go, you need to be homeless. You need to be fleeing violence, or all these other regulations that are in there. Yeah, it's all these stipulations. It's like, wow, it's red tape. As Dan said earlier, cut the red tape.
Yeah.
Like, that's all, that's all I'm asking.
I think it's important that we, we both say that we're, I don't begrudge, I don't begrudge the people that are in BC housing.
No, no.
Like, I don't begrudge the ten to twelve percent, but, but don't, don't play favors. Like, I mean, if you're, if you're gonna have ten to twelve percent in BC housing, fine. But at least make it a fair system where you're not discriminate, you're not discriminating against the other ninety percent.
Exactly. I'm saying, well, you, you want to be in that housing? Well, then suck, it's like suck it up, buttercup. You know what? Have you bought a corporate landlord this? Um, yeah, hey, go, go for it, but we're not gonna raise your income, because you just go and get a job instead, right?
Yeah.
Because.
Get a job that will can clawback your pension.
Yeah, yeah, because that's the best, uh, the best remedy is called.
That's the solution.
Yeah, it's like, give the, as, as Doug Ford would say to the, there's, there are PWD citizens in Ontario, just get a job, just get a job. And I kept hearing that rhetoric in BC, same other provinces, I'm sure it's happening. If you're in another province in Canada and you'd love to come on to the show, talk about this, is that what's happening in your province? I want to hear. I want to hear about that, so it will help, um, our advocacy, our channel here grow and we can network together and find a common solution and hold the politicians to account by telling them about your lived experience. Letting them know it's not okay. It's not okay that these regulations are in place. Uh, again, um, I, I want to thank everyone for this, uh, long episode, extended, so today.
We just like, we just like to ramble and I apologize.
We do. We, 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 we kind of.
But you know, may, maybe what we should do is, is, here's, here's the last thing I'll say is, is if people want to reach out to you on Twitter and they want to share their own pink unicorn story, let's, let's, let's share pink unicorn stories. I, I want to hear, I want to hear everybody else's pink unicorn story of what, what pink unicorn is holding you back. Uh, yeah, I, I want to hear. And so maybe forward that on to, uh, Brent on Twitter and put the hashtag, put the hashtag pink unicorn, you know? And we'll share, we'll share pink unicorn stories, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, pink unicorns are, are, are not real, so, yeah, just want everyone to know, they're not real. They're made up, uh, regulations, uh, regulations that allow government to, um, to clawback and, uh, cause, uh, you know, punitive damages to PWD's lives, right? And these, these regulations are, they're, they're harmful. They, they don't make sense. They were made up, uh, decades, ma- major decades ago, uh, after the Second World War. The, uh, you know, this all came to fruition. Did you know, everyone, that back in the early nineteen nineties, that PWD across Canada, the ones who have the PWD designation, they had pensions. They had pensions.
Bite your tongue, Brent, bite your tongue.
Oh, damn. Yeah. But then government said, no, that's not right. We don't want PWD to have pensions. We just want them to get a job.
We don't, we don't, we don't want to respect people. We don't want to respect people with disabilities. That's, that's just wrong to respect people.
Oh, yeah, we, you know, they paid into CPP all their life. You know, but we, we, we don't want them to get ahead. We would want to claw that off them. And you got a survivor's pension. We, we don't want them to have that. We just want to take it away. That's what pink unicorns are about, people. I just want you to understand that. That's why when we talk about pink unicorns, so please, yeah, reach out to me. Let me know if you want to come on, um, later, um, later in August. We'll schedule a time, um, like I say, August is a, um, there's not a lot going on. Uh, I'm gonna be away for a while, but, uh, I have a guest coming on later in August. Um, that'll be confirmed. But then after that, we'll get you scheduled in. Maybe we'll even target towards September. So if you're gonna be away and you'd rather come on in September, yeah, we, we've got the whole calendar open, so.
When you come, when you come back from your holidays, we're go, we're going to be, uh, working towards our other, our, our year two episode fifty, we're getting close to episode fifty again. So that's, uh, that's exciting. Year two, episode fifty.
Yeah, exactly. And if you'd like to see some other, um, content, uh, that you'd love us to, uh, talk about, um, it, it's environmental stuff, whatever it may be, uh, as long as it's PWD, um, you know, it's, it's kind of, uh, corresponds with your, like, your lived experience, um, stuff, uh, whatever it is, just let us know, right? Um, cause, uh, we'd love to, uh, enhance the, our channel, um, other added features, if we can do it. Uh, we'll, we'll, definitely we'll consider looking at that. Um, I have some ideas. Neil knows what those ideas are. We talked about it. Uh, for promotions of, uh, of, of stuff for our channel. Uh, so if you want to be a sponsor and you, uh, you love our content, reach out to us and, uh, we can.
If anybody's BFF with, uh, with Michael Buble, uh, let, let me know. I, I want to be his BFF too.
Exactly, Michael. No, we still want to get you on, uh, you know, uh, it's another wonderful day. It's a beautiful day.
It's a beautiful day.
Hey, yay. But thanks, everyone, for tuning in.
Thanks, everyone. No more singing, Brent.
No.
Bye, bye, everyone.